Okay, we ready?
Yes.
All right. Whew, well, welcome to an unprecedented regular meeting of the Larkspur City Council that on Wednesday, March 18th, 2020, that we are doing by video GoToMeeting conferencing. So we implore all of our friends and neighbors to have some patience with us. It's the first time we've done a video conferencing, but it's very important for us to maintain social distance and stick to the Department of Health and Human Services order for sheltering in place. So here we are. I think I would like to call the meeting to order with a roll call.
Councilmember Candell?
I'm here.
Councilmember Helmer?
Present.
Councilmember Paulson?
Here.
Vice Mayor Harof?
Here.
Mayor Way?
Here. I think we can skip the Pledge of Allegiance for tonight because we're still trying to figure out how this awkwardness is going to work. But I'll move on to number two, which is public comment. So I'd like Allison to explain how public comments can work tonight and the opportunities people have for emailing and for submitting public comment. But remember, for public comment in this section, it's only for items that are not on the agenda. So Allison, can you give a little explanation for people?
Thank you, yes. If you are attending this meeting via the GoToWebinar conference and you'd like to make a public comment at this time, you can raise your hand by clicking the raise hand icon, and I will call out your name, unmute you, so you can make your comments to the council. As of right now, I see no one wishing to make a public comment by raising their hand, so I'll leave it for just a moment to give people a chance to do that. Your other options for sending in public comments are listed on your screen here. You can email to comments@cityoflarkspur.org, and we will read those comments aloud to the council, or you can use the city's e-comment form at this web address, cityoflarkspur.org commentary.
Okay, that's a lot to take in for people. So knowing that we don't have currently any public comment, I think I'm going to reserve with the rest of the council members' approval an opportunity to revisit public comments later in the meeting if things come in in the next few minutes, because I want to make sure people have that opportunity who are all learning this new process. And I want to make sure that people have a chance to send comments in those various forms. So if that's all right with the rest of the council, we'll return to this in a few minutes. All right, moving on to presentations and proclamations, we have none. Item number four is approval of the consent calendar. Do I have any council member who would like to pull an item from the consent calendar? And you can see that Allison has posted the current agenda on our screen here, too. Seeing no council member wanting to pull an item, and I don't think we really have an opportunity for public to pull it tonight because it's just a little too complicated for all of that. So I will have a motion for approval of the consent calendar.
I'll move.
Allison, I think what we need to do is whoever said so moved, just say your name so Allison gets it clearly.
Helmer moved.
Who's that, Dan?
Yes.
Scott seconded. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Yes, anyone opposed? No.
Can I, this is Sky, can I ask you to do this by roll call vote?
Oh, yes, all right. Allison, could you please do that by roll call vote?
Yes. Councilmember Candell?
Aye.
Councilmember Helmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Paulson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Harof?
Aye.
Mayor Way?
Yes. All right, thank you. Moving on to number five, the city manager's oral report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. I wanted to use my oral report to just briefly explain sort of this platform for some of the people who are participating. Although I'm finding that a lot of folks I talk to are very familiar with this platform. This is a slightly different version of GoToMeeting, which a lot of folks are more experienced with than the GoToWebinar. We chose the GoToWebinar product because it facilitated what we're doing here, which is open mic for the council members and staff, and then they have a call on individual members of the public, one by one. And so should we have anybody from the public that tries to do a comment later, we'll be able to test that. We've run several beta tests in the last 48 hours. And I really want to thank Allison Faust, the city clerk. She's done the heavy lifting to get us to this point. And I just want to say, this is the product we're using today. I don't know if this will be the product we use through all our meetings going forward. It's solved the problem of getting us online and continuing the business of Larkspur City Government. For the benefit of those who haven't had as much experience with GoToWebinar, the most robust interface is on a laptop or desktop computer. You'll see if you're on that kind of system, you've got multiple windows and multiple ways to sort of customize your interaction. Works very well through apps on a phone or tablet. What you may find, if you haven't used this functionality before, is that you have to swipe to go through screens. You may have one screen where you're seeing the camera images, and you may have another screen that's depicting the image of the agenda. This image is not interactive. We're hoping down the road, there'll be more ability to create an interactive image. Fortunately, there isn't really anything tonight of substance that requires us to run through big presentations, so we have more time to master what we would show on the screen. The other thing I just wanted to explain to folks is this particular platform's limited to six webcams, so whichever staff person is presenting an item will be the staff person on camera, but there are other staff members present and can chime in. You've already heard the city attorney, Sky, would have chimed in. He's present, as are some of the department heads, if they're needed for the items that are on your agenda. With that, Madam Mayor, I'm going to turn it back to you. I have a lot of comments and updates, but they're probably better saved for the coronavirus item later on the agenda.
Okay. Could you, would you like to defer to give us an update on what's happening with city services to that time?
That's part of that agenda.
So in this initial presentation by the city manager, are there any questions from the council to Dan?
No, other than I would like to echo his gratitude to Allison for all of her hard work and help.
Yes, agreed.
Allison's indicated me someone's raised their hand. I think we might want to be a little more liberal tonight in terms of checking folks what their hands raised for. So Allison, let's see what that person has to say.
Thank you, yes. I'm going to unmute our public comment from Kevin Carroll. And Kevin, if you could make your comments to the council now, it's the time.
Yep, I'm sorry, I'm new to this. You answered my question when I typed it in. I didn't realize I had to take that down. So red indicates our hand is raised, green, it's down.
Um, I'm seeing a green for hand raised, but I will lower your hand for you if you are done with your public comment on this item.
I am.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate you participating. This is a complicated thing for all of us, but I think we'll get better at it in the weeks ahead. So let's move on then to council members' oral reports and comments. Any, I guess we'll just start from the top. I don't have anything to add at this moment. Kevin, do you have any council member reports or comments?
Nothing in particular. I think there's an agenda item later on where Gabe's going to talk about our conversations with the Mobile Home Park folks, and I'll defer to him.
Okay. Dan Helmer, anything?
Not this evening, Madam Mayor.
All right, how about you, Scott?
Yeah, the only thing I'd like to mention is Gabe and I spoke for the library board as part of the subcommittee. The gist of it was they were all very interested in moving forward with creating a new library as expeditiously as possible. They asked that I relay that to the council, and that if the priority was, we're going to list out priorities, that would be the number one, would be timing, as opposed to how we get it done or what it ends up looking like. They would just like to see some progress and asked me to put that on the calendar at some time in the future.
Okay, thank you. I think it's, we're facing sort of an unprecedented situation here where our city staff and businesses and the council will be really narrowly focusing some of our agenda items. So I look forward to having that when we probably have less of a crisis mode happening now. So, Gabe? Any council report you'd like to give?
Yeah, so three items. The first is, you know, for the Mobile Home Park, I'll save that for 8.1, another business item. And then just to tag on what Scott said, I think what might be helpful, you know, I was in the discussion with him, and we attended the meeting with Franklin, you know, about just library operations, you know, the library liaisons. If we could clarify, and it doesn't have to be today, but at some point, I think there's an ad hoc committee, which I believe you and Kevin are part of, about the comments in construction. And I just wanted to both honor whatever your efforts are, or you know, the history to date, you know, any Brown Act issues, because two people are already working on it. So for me, it was just that clarification. I, you know, I agree, there's an interest, there's some, you know, strong advocates for moving forward with construction, but I just wanted to, you know, see about that formality. So that's a bit of a question, and you know, something for the future, as you said, we have a lot going on. And then the only other thing is with regard to our Twin City Disaster Response Council, so we've had some really good meetings, and we have an NRG coordinator. I think that might have been reported out already, but just to emphasize, Rachel Kurtz is now the coordinator, working both with Corte Madera, the city manager, and with Larkspur. And, you know, we're looking at any way to support people, you know, with the coronavirus, so nothing specific, but that's something that we hope to bring more news to the council and to the public as that develops. And that's it for me.
Okay, thank you. We're moving on to number seven, public hearings. There are none tonight, and to the business items, we have two. 8.1 is the Mobile Home Park Ad Hoc Committee update, and I'd like to refer everyone to the online agenda that's here, that we have had one written public comment that has come in, and that is also posted on our city website. And it's available online now, that public comment, but so far, that's the only written public comment that we've had. So who would like to present on that? I know the ad hoc committee is Vice Mayor Harof and Councilmember Paulson.
Yeah, I guess I'll start. Kevin and I spoke earlier today, so, you know, the first, you know, thing we wanted to say as the ad hoc committee is that we really regret that Monday's meeting, we had an 11 o'clock Monday morning scheduled meeting on the 16th, I believe, and that had to be canceled because of, you know, all of what's going on. So, you know, we had a lot of input from the stakeholders, and I believe the public comment bears on that. So our first, you know, piece of, you know, our response to that is that we really, you know, given that it's going to be hard to do in-person meetings, we remain strongly committed to ensuring that all of the stakeholders, the owners of the Mobile Home Parks, as well as the residents, are able to navigate to what's going on. So we're going to put together another time to meet. You know, we don't want this to be delayed, and we hope that helps address the email that came in from Ms. Dubrovsky, from Joan. And, you know, we can't comment specifically on her request or how to answer that, but there's been a lot of process so far, and the next logical step is to have a meeting, and perhaps we can use GoToMeeting, and we'll put a date out as soon as possible. So now that we have this technology running, we have a means to do this, and we just want them to know that we, you know, I at least prioritize this, and I know Vice Mayor Harof as well, so we'll be reaching out to them as soon as possible, coordinating with the city manager.
Yeah, it is a very difficult time to schedule meetings of this nature, especially with many of the seniors who live in that community. We need to be very protective of their health and safety, so. Kevin, is there anything you needed, you would like to add?
No, like Gabe said, he and I talked a little bit earlier today, and I think he fairly summarized what we agreed would be appropriate to say at this time.
Okay. So Allison, is there anybody making public comment about this business item?
As of this time, I don't have any hands raised. If anyone would like to make a public comment through GoToWebinar, please press the hand raise icon, and we'll call on you.
Okay.
No emails have been submitted, or e-comment forums have been coming for this item.
Okay. Well, I'll close the item now, but if they do come in, I'll reserve the opportunity to open it again. So now we're on to business item 8.2, Changes to City Practices in Response to the Coronavirus. And I believe our city manager is on with this.
So thank you, Madam Mayor. I sort of have developed a new mantra that the staffs now heard me say, at least, staff members, that probably will be my mantra in operation for a while. And that's what I told you only applied at that moment, because this is by far the most fluid situation of my career. Information is moving rapidly, the circumstances are evolving rapidly, the directives from above are evolving rapidly, and we, what I do in this presentation tonight, some of it may be very different by tomorrow at noon, depending on the circumstances. So I only say that caveat. I don't think I need to belabor that this has been a challenging time for our community, and that extends to your staff, which is adjusting, just like everybody else in the world of business and personal life. With that said, I'm going to do something I don't usually do as much, which is a little more reading, because I solicited some points from our two public safety agencies that they asked me to share with you and the public. And then I will go into some discussion about the city operations and how we're adjusting them at this time. So first, I'd like to offer some comments that we received from the Central Marin Fire Staff. First, some general messages that they want to communicate, and these are messages that I think, community being such an engaged community, is already experienced, but we'd like to underscore them. Please follow the guidance of Health and Human Services in the CDC. We all need to do as a community to get through this difficult period and accomplish the goal of limiting the spread of COVID-19. In particular, they can't emphasize enough at fire, the need for social distancing and not congregating in groups, and they've been a little concerned about still seeing the congregation of some individuals out there who don't, haven't quite adjusted to the new paradigm. The public should follow their healthcare provider's recommendations if they are put on quarantine or have a positive COVID-19 test. And as you can imagine, our firefighters are very concerned that folks are communicating with their healthcare providers and then know what the protocol should be to engage our firefighters if they arrive as EMS providers. What fire is specifically doing now is fire suspending all non-essential public contacts. So for this time, there won't be in-person classes, there will be no non-mandatory instructions. They've ended all visits by the public, the stations, they aren't giving tours in the stations. Right now, training in person among their staff is being limited as much as possible, and as much digital resources are being, as many digital resources being used as possible. Like a lot, like this meeting tonight, staff doing video conferencing, training for all of these meetings, please, for the public, they'd like you to continue to use the 911 system for emergencies, but please, like, general questions about what's going on. If the public calls 911, they will be asked if anyone in their household has tested positive for COVID-19 or is exhibiting flu-like symptoms, and folks need to adjust that. That's a question they want to know upfront so that they can manage the interaction with the caller in an appropriate way and in their response in an appropriate way. The way we're actually responding to medical calls is by sending one paramedic to the patient's side initially in full protective equipment, and that can be very jarring for folks the first time you experience that. That full protective equipment is face mask, face shield, and that's to allow the medic, the paramedic, the opportunity to make sure they know whether they're dealing with somebody who is positive for COVID-19. This also will allow that person to advise the rest of the crew what precautions they need to take for that interaction. So we appreciate the patience of the public in sort of dealing with that new paradigm of how our emergency responders are going to interact with them. There is, as there is in a lot of things, there's a supply shortage right now. So we have to be very careful in the use of this personal protection, because we only have so many outfits of it to utilize. And so they want to be very careful about that. Patients will generally be asked to put on their own face mask if they have one, and then they'll be supplied one if necessary. So that was our, those were our comments from our fire personnel. And then we have some comments that the Central Marine Police offered. First, Central Marine Police has closed front counter service at both of its stations. We're keeping the lobbies open. The lobbies have telephones, the public can use that telephone to contact staff that's in the building. We're trying to now handle as many of our calls for service as possible by telephone and limiting our personal interaction as police personnel. That's a big change for us. We're a community-based police force. We pride ourselves on interacting with the community face-to-face, and so it's as much an adjustment for our officers as it is, I think, for the public. We're having to be more strategic about prioritizing calls for service and keeping our staff as safe as possible as we respond to those calls so that we can keep everybody healthy. You know, one of the challenges we're going to have in our first responders is as they have to quarantine and they get exposed, just making sure we have sufficient numbers to maintain their services is critical. The police wanted to let folks know what they're observing with respect to the social isolation ordinance or the shelter in place ordinance order. They're very pleased to say that most businesses appear to be compliant with the stop work order and are asking questions to make sure that they are doing things the way they're supposed to. Folks have been doing a good job of politely letting the police know when there's some concern about what businesses or independent contractors are doing, which is great. It gives the police a chance to go have a positive educational interaction. You know, we're all learning about this together. One of the things that we're doing is going out and contacting those businesses to figure out, a lot of times, those businesses are actually supposed to be there, they're essential under the definition of the social, of the ordinance, the order. And so that's the first determination the police are trying to make. When they're not sure if, from a phone interaction, if that person's essential, they are going out to the work or work site to have the personal interaction to make that determination. And the other thing is that the police are also starting to take the precautions they need to take in how they interact with the public, and so we all need to adjust to maybe a more jarring interaction as they put on more and more equipment to protect themselves and the public so that they can continue to serve. So that covers what the police offered.
So further, in your report, can I just ask if the council members have any questions on those two public safety aspects? What are Central Marin Fires doing and Central Marine Police? Any specific question?
Madam Mayor, I have a question. How can we get the message out to the demographic? It doesn't matter how young. I will guess approximately 16 to older adults to respect the social distancing guidance that's been put out by the county, and especially with respect to the seven-county guidance given by the region. My observation is that there, there's a lot of assumption that because you're young and healthy, that you don't need to observe these guidance suggestions. And I know it's voluntary, but I'm, my observation is there's quite a bit of misunderstanding about the seriousness of the issue with respect to spread versus having symptoms. So I'd like Dan's suggestion on how we can better communicate that to the younger members of our community. I'm just seeing a lack of understanding about how this should work with respect to how we all work together to support the effort to slow the spread.
Do you have any comments on that, Dan?
So I think in this early period of the shelter in place order, the emphasis from public safety is on education. So to the extent that they're observing behaviors that are inconsistent with the order, they're engaging when they can in educating. And so congregating and not practicing social distancing is actually a violation of the order. So to the extent possible, they'll stop to do that education. The hard part, of course, is we're stretched taking care of prioritizations, and right now, it's hard to necessarily say that's where we can devote our greatest energy. So this is one where we really need the community to step up. We need, we need people to speak to one another and say, let's do this the right way. And we all can contribute there, and I know that sounds a little Pollyannaish maybe, but that's in some respects my best advice to folks right now. You know, we're hopefully not yet at a place where the police have to switch from education to something more aggressive, but we're probably going to approach there soon. The order's still new to folks. I think some of what Councilmember Helmer's addressing, though, and has been just an anecdotal observation of some of the city staff, is our youth, some of our youth are still not fully understanding the magnitude of the situation. And so we really need parents to step up and say, it's not okay. We all have to change our behavior right now.
And I think this is also the importance of the cooperative social messaging that we're, all the agencies are doing, from Nextdoor to the city's website, and the consistent messaging that has to come from the authority, not from random people in the community, but the authority of the Health and Human Services and our public health agencies. So I, we have that on our website, and I also see it put out on various other platforms, which is what we should be encouraging people to follow. Any other question about those two public safety issues that were brought up? Okay, so Dan, oh, Gabe, yes?
Just a quick comment question. So, you know, to follow on what you were saying, I think that the Central Marin Police have done a great job using Nextdoor, I believe it's Margot, or, you know, their social. Yeah, but, you know, I would say in the last, you know, five days or so, I haven't seen many posts from there, so it may be helpful for that messaging to increase. And I'm wondering if that's an option of, you know, using limited resources, and because it's been very effective in the past, so maybe something to consider. My question for Dan was, you know, has the city seen any uptick in, you know, calls or incidents, you know, say in the shopping center areas or in homes, or, you know, is there any change in, you know, requests, you know, from the new sort of shelter and at-home, you know, order?
I don't have the data on what's happened with the calls, but I can work on I don't have the data on what's happened with the calls, but I can work on getting that for, for everybody.
Okay, will you move on? Thank you for stopping. And now if you want to continue your report, that'd be great.
Sure. So I'll transition now to speak more specifically to the City of Larkspur's services and protocols that we've put in place. For the time being and for the foreseeable future, all of the city facilities are closed to walk-in business. So, you know, that's definitely very jarring to a customer service oriented organization, but you're going to find the doors locked at all of the city facilities. We are slowly preparing for appointment procedures where we'll create a controlled environment so we ensure that there's social distancing for those interactions. In the meantime, the staff is holding appointments electronically and on the phone and continues to provide as much service digitally as possible. Like all of you as residents and like all of you as business owners and operators and employees, we are putting the directives of the shelter in place order in practice for the city. For us, that meant to prioritize in the last several days what constitutes an essential service and what's a non-essential service. So we made the difficult determination that the library and the recreation department, including our childcare center are non-essential services. I have a little more to about that in a minute. For essential services, our administration, which includes our finance department, was deemed essential. Public Works was deemed essential and planning and building were deemed essential. Now, within those different categories, we have been and continue to evaluate specific functions. Some functions are being deemed non-essential or less priority and they'll be dealt with as we can. Other services are deemed essential and are continuing to the best that we're able to offer them. One of the challenges for us right now is evaluating even what we think is an essential service. How do we do it in a way that ensures the safety of not only our staff, but also the people that we're interacting with? Because that's right now our primary concern. All non-essential employees have been ordered to self-isolate at home and follow the directives of the shelter in place order. As much as possible, our employees who are doing essential functions are limiting their trips to city facilities. And we are revolving to provide those services in the digital world. This meeting's a great example. Allison did most of the heavy lifting at home so that she could get this up and running for us. Now, there are some things we still haven't quite been ready to make that transition to the digital world. So folks are making occasional trips into city facilities. So you will see people in the various city facilities practicing, practicing social distancing when they do so. Our non-essential employees, particularly because they work for library and rec, which are very facility oriented, are not as able to contribute per se at this time, but I'm really proud of them. They've been contacting me with all sorts of ideas of how they can continue to help serve the Larkspur public. Our recreation staff contacted today and they want to join a movement of recreation departments to launch a virtual recreation service, which is all about pointing people to online resources to, to help them maintain health and help them find programs that they might find interesting during this period where we're all shuttered quite a bit more. So, you know, that's a great example of some of our staff who've been sort of just told, go stay home, be with your family. They're still, they're still really wanting to be engaged and I'm proud of them. You know, I probably should let the council and the community know, we're very appreciative that over the last year, the council had funded a study of our limitations and needs in technology. And so we actually have a document that serves as our plan to move to the digital world. Now, it was supposed to be a plan that we held out over five years. So we're going to now see how much of that plan we can roll out in days and weeks. And so that's, it's definitely great that we have that document because we have the guideposts, but that's still quite a daunting challenge for us. And we just ask everybody to be patient as we sort it all out. All of our, I want to return to the point about employees that have been asked to shelter in place. They're still key members of our team. And at this point, all of them have been reminded they're disaster service workers. And so we are in a disaster. We, and we're tonight going to declare an emergency here in Larkspur. Now, this is not your normal disaster. Typically in a disaster service situation, everyone in the city has a prescribed role under our emergency planning documents. Because Health and Human Services is exclusively a county function in Marin. A lot of our situation right now is letting the county know what we're capable of doing. So a good example is the county's working quickly to create childcare centers that'll be available to medical providers and first responders as, you know, they may need childcare in order to report to work. Still working out all the protocols around that. There's a couple counties that are taking the lead and sort of setting those protocols up. It's quite possible we will ask our non-essential employees, particularly our childcare center employees, to help manage those facilities. At this time, the county's told me they don't need any Larkspur employees, but as people get exposed and test positive, that could change very rapidly. And I'm really proud of our staff that when we sent them home, they all said, keep me informed and let me know how I can step up and be involved. Within our essential departments, we've started the process of identifying individual services that are essential and non-essential. We've also created a new category, if you will, which is less essential. And so for an example of that, our maintenance division is going to be try to minimize the amount of exposure that they're experiencing and the amount of potential for them to do any exposures out in the public. So key services that they need to attend to, to preserve our infrastructure and maintain health and safety will be addressed. So mowing the lawn, for example, in the park today on March 18th may not be a priority. It's sort of less essential. We've been mowing it pretty well, but we can't let that lawn or the other elements of a park get out of hand because that'll start to attract critters and other things we don't want in the parks that threaten safety. So we're going to be taking a schedule like that and, and downsizing it, but we will continue to attend to those things. I bring this up because while we sort all this out and we figure out what this new paradigm looks like, you might see a few more weeds than we would like around town and you might see, it might take us a little longer to address graffiti and some of the other things that we try to stay on top of the minute it happens. Please keep letting us know you're observing those problems, but we ask you to do so politely and just understand we might take a little longer to get to that because we're dealing with health and safety and infrastructure as our key activity. Public Works capital projects are exempt from the order, provided that the contractors observe social distancing protocol. And so work on the bridge will continue. We want to keep that going. That's our primary project. We intend to continue with our pavement program, but one of the things I want to caution the community about is we don't know what the impact of this situation's going to be on the, we don't know if they're going to have the people power to bid on work. And so we'll have to take that one step at a time. So our intent to keep commissioning our capital projects, provided the resources are out there. And then we're trying our best to provide the community with as much information as we can. Like a lot of agencies, we now have a page you can visit to look at the latest coronavirus information or follow links to more robust and dynamic sites about the situation. And that's citelarkspur.org/coronavirus. And you'll find a lot of information there. We're looking at what some other communities have launched as information portals for businesses. We know there's a lot of concern in the business community right now. And we're trying to put together links that will help them in terms of finding what resources are out there at the federal and state level for them. And then the last thing we've started to do, it's a little tangential to, to just discussing the state of city services, but we've started to, like I suspect most business owners are doing, is study the fiscal impact that we anticipate this will have. And of course, it's a great unknown to some degree what the fiscal impact will be. Fortunately for the city, a significant portion of our revenue streams have already come in for the year. But of course, one of them comes in on a monthly basis and that's sales tax. And that's the one that we're going to see the most immediate impact to. We did our first cut projection today. We, we think it's, it's going to be a seven-figure impact to the city's revenue streams in this fiscal year. You know, probably will clear the million dollar mark. I'm hoping it's based on the, the down and dirty, quick, quick and dirty analysis that we did, that's probably about where I'm going to benchmark it for you. This is why we have a catastrophic reserve. So I want to assure folks that in the immediate term, we're going to continue to operate as best we can in the environment and provide all the services that we can in this environment. What we can do going forward is going to be a tough analysis as we try to figure out what our revenue streams look like in the next fiscal year. So for us, the next several months, bringing you the budget is now a total new exercise. And to be honest, I think we had about 70% of the budget packaged already and probably now we're at about 10% mark because we need to rethink everything. And it, yes, like businesses are going to have to change their practices, the city's probably going to have to adjust its practices. And I know that's, that's tough and probably more gloom and doom than I should end with, but it's, it's what we're wrestling with right now.
Thank you very much for that. I'd like to refer the public to our website where this is outlined, what are city services that are available and the contact information so they can, can continue to receive services to the best of our ability at this time. And I also noticed that a hard copy had been placed at the appropriate, appropriate bulletin board sites around Larkspur and Greenbrier to inform us also. So I'd like to ask if any of the other council members have questions about this last portion of his presentation?
I know. Sorry?
Go ahead, you're on.
Yeah. First of all, I just wanted to express appreciation to, to Dan and to everyone, the city staff, for their diligent efforts to support us in going through this really challenging time. But particularly to you, Dan, for the leadership that you're showing and the conduct meter that you always display, but are doing particularly well at, under these times. And I think you actually did answer a question that I had, which was about the status of the bridge. Like I had occasion to drive over there today, only on my way to get gas from my car, so that was a legitimate reason, I believe. But I went across the bridge and it looked like there was a little bit of slowdown of effort there. And I didn't know whether that was related to our need to be responsive to the current challenge or was weather related or anything of that sort. Sounds like it's not.
Yeah, probably was more what they were doing at that moment.
Yeah, okay.
Dan Hillmer, you had a question?
No, I was expressing, I did owe Kevin's comments.
Okay, great. And Allison, is there any, since this is a business item, is there anyone who has put, raised their hand to express, ask a question?
Meta Mayor, it looked like Member Paulson might have wanted to.
I'm doing it the old fashioned way. Yeah, same thing, Dan. Thank you so much. I really, you know, appreciate a lot of what you're doing. Two things, and I know there's a lot going on, so this may, may be a little early, but you didn't mention much about planning, you know, public works and finance and the rec and library, you know, anything, any updates there if there are any? And second question is, I really love the fact that you see the IT plan as an opportunity. And if there's anything that sticks out for you as a specific, you know, I'd love to hear it. If not now, maybe at a future meeting. That, that's something that I was really thinking about during the day, you know, just this meeting shows, you know, how this is an opportunity for, you know, certain transformation.
Well, first on planning and building, I didn't spend time on it, not out of intent to slight them, but it's probably the area that's currently the one of greatest debate and fluidity among all the agencies. When you read the shelter in place order, how it is going to apply to work that's in progress in the private world, projects that are underway at people's homes, is something everyone's still sorting out because our desire is that it's applied fairly and uniformly across Marin. What I can tell you, increasingly the discussion is that if we don't have to send an inspector in and create the possibility of an exposure between the inspector and our residents or workers at a site, we're not going to do that. And so I think we're going to see more information coming out in the next 24 hours to 48 hours that will clarify the intent of the order on some of the questions about what can and can't happen during this period. What folks should know and that we're here to immediately facilitate is our goal with the shelter in place order is definitely if your home is experiencing any problem that you need to have a contractor or a service professional like a plumber come deal with so that your home is a healthy and safe environment for you and your family, we are prioritizing whatever approvals we need to give you to make that happen. The other thing that Jess was chatting with the city attorney about, about an hour before this meeting was that we are going to put the pedal to the metal here on electronic signature authorizations. You will be asked to take a legislative action probably at your next council meeting if, and that will authorize us to do a lot more business by electronic signature so that that way we can issue the permits rapidly and completely by electronic means. Then that is a good segue into you asked about technology. I think the most immediate transformation that I hadn't planned for that I think is going to be really interesting is as the supply side lightens up a little bit, we have placed orders for more laptops. I think probably a lot of folks have done that. And we are placing orders for laptops that will become the primary computer for our staff. And so that means that we will be not only able to take our workplace home and work in a home environment, but it also means when folks come into the building, we can manage the social distancing environment much better. So that's that short-term. Long-term, we're just accelerating a lot of the transformation of hard copy materials into electronic interactive materials.
Gabe, was that, was that the last of your question? Okay.
Thank you, thanks. Yeah, thanks. Dan, my, I guess my biggest concern is making sure the public has information. As you said, that it's changing so quickly that, you know, it would be great, I know the website gets updated. Is it possible to have something that, you know, some type of blog or just something that has a date and a time so people can go on there and say, yes, I know the latest information, whether it's related, health-related, business-related, staff-related, hey, this just came down two hours ago, whatever it is, just so the public can feel that they really have up-to-date information and not have to wait, you know, two weeks for the next city council meeting for it.
So. So I'm going to have to double-check with the staff to make sure what I'm saying's correct. And hopefully I'm going to get a text telling me it is or isn't while I'm talking to you. I believe that when we post new information in our news section of our website, it's automatically pushed out onto our Facebook page in chronological order. So the, if I'm correct about that, Facebook page would actually be a great way to make sure you were looking at the most recent information. And then right front and center on our homepage is that news brief section, which we try to keep as these are the newest bits of information we have. I'll have to talk to staff about your suggestion and we'll try to figure out there's some other avenues for us to make sure folks know this is the latest thing.
Thank you.
All right, Allison, back to my question, is there anyone, since this is a business item, that has raised their hand or asked to ask a question?
We have received one written public comment that I'll read aloud now. The commenter is Tony Mickisich, and he says, "Thank you, Dan. It's not gloom and doom. It is our life now, and we will all do our best for the whole community. Second, Kevin on Dan's calm demeanor. Much appreciated." Tony.
Thank you. And Allison, do you have Tony's address and so that we can make sure that that's added to our online file?
We have a name.
Okay. So, and then lastly, Allison, is there anybody else who has indicated they would like to make a public comment about items that are not on the agenda?
We have no hands raised at the moment to comment on any items, and no public comment has been sent by email.
Okay. Thank you. Can you unplug? I'm sorry, I need to plug my power cord in. Could you grab my power? Great. Thank you very much.
But that doesn't happen at a regular meeting.
Yeah. Okay. So it sounds like we are ready to adjourn this meeting and move on to our special meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Anyone? So, Sky, do we need to do this again in a, in a roll call or is it okay just to say that?
The mayor actually has the ability to adjourn.
Okay, so we're adjourned. Thank you very much. So now we are going to open the special meeting of the Larkspur City Council on Wednesday, March 18th, beginning at 7:29 PM. And we'll have a call to order again, Allison.
Thank you. Councilmember Candell? Councilmember Hilmer?
Here.
Councilmember Paulson? Vice Mayor Haroff?
Here.
Shareway.
I'm here. And everyone can see on the screen, Allison has posted the agenda, and there have been no changes in the agenda or public comments submitted in advance. So moving on to item number two, which is public comment. Is there anyone who, a member of the public who would like to address the city council regarding items that are not on this special meeting agenda tonight? Allison, will you let me know if someone raises their hand?
I will. We have no public comment at the moment.
Okay. And once again, I think just as we're getting used to this process, I'll reserve the opportunity to return to asking public comment at the end of our meeting. So we have business item, only one business item, which is 3.1, which is to adopt a resolution proclaiming a local state of emergency related to the novel coronavirus to 2019 or COVID-2019. Dan, do you have a report for us on that?
Just a few brief comments, Madam Mayor and council members. You've probably seen reports in the media that cities across the state, if, if not the country, are starting to adopt these resolutions. Specifically, to Larkspur, they serve two primary purposes. The first purpose is to acknowledge the emergency and document our formal declaration of it so that should monies be flowing down from the federal or state government to compensate cities for what they've done to help mitigate the impacts of, of the disaster, we'll be eligible for it. We already started the process of documenting costs that we've incurred so far. The, for us, actual expenditures have been fairly modest because our first responders are in our JPAs, they're not actually in the city of Larkspur. And then also, as I mentioned before, the county, in California, the county really is the entity for dealing with Health and Human Services impacts. We will start to incur more costs, and so your actions today is helpful in establishing the protocol. The second one is, and I want to make sure folks both understand how this would work. A second primary point is that as your executive, if it becomes necessary for me to move more swiftly than calling a public meeting will allow to do an expenditure or enter into a contract to mitigate an immediate problem related to the COVID-19 situation, you're authorizing me to do so. Now, should I do so? And if I were to dispense with any standard protocol or procedure, that would then be disclosed to the council as immediately as possible, and then it'd be posted as a item on a subsequent council meeting. We don't expect that to happen very often, but we can imagine the possibility that we might need to enter into an agreement rather quickly in order to mitigate impacts as they become apparent to us.
Okay, thank you. Are there questions from the city council on this resolution 1420?
Yeah, Dan, if you, if you don't mind just clarifying on to the spending threshold that this changes?
Well, one of the, one of the, and I can correct me if I explain this wrong, one of the things you're empowering me to do is to act contradictory to policies and procedures that you've put in place that would stop me from responding immediately to any crisis situation. So with respect to spending, the city manager, under policy of the council, only has discretion to spend up to $50,000. So we couldn't imagine that there might be a scenario where a contract that I need to sign in a very short amount of time is in excess of $50,000. And so, again, if I execute that authority and I do that, there, as quickly, as soon as possible, there'd be a disclosure to the council that that had occurred, and then it would be published at the subsequent council meeting.
Dan, is there, is there a new limit to what that would be if you're getting rid of the $50,000 or upper limit? Is there a new upper limit that replaces it or is it unlimited at this point?
Again, these are, this power's limited to responding specifically to something in the arena of COVID-19. And so you're not constraining my ability to do that. That said, the constraint is the city's financial situation. And we, we, as a city entity, particularly because we don't do the Health and Human Services, we would have to be very thoughtful that whatever we were doing was a cost we could manage.
Okay. Are there further questions?
Only did Dan clarify the distinction between the county's services and the city's services.
You would like him to further clarify that?
Only if, if other council members need that clarification.
Do people feel they need clarification of what our role is in, in reference to this county versus the city's role? Feel comfortable with that?
I think I have a pretty good understanding, so.
Okay. And I'd like to refer everyone to on our online, that this resolution is posted online, just like all of our other things. If you have any questions on that, it's a two-page resolution, and it's available for you to, to look at and to comment on. Seeing no further questions, oh wait, Gabe has one?
Yep, just one more. I didn't see this in the, in the resolution, but what's the, the exit clause? Is it another vote or is it a declaration from the Health Services Department?
I think I'll defer to Sky on that question.
Sky, did you hear that question?
I sure did. So declarations of emergency have to be renewed every 30 days by the city council. And so this will basically appear on one of your agendas until there is no further emergency conditions. And then, once we determine that the emergency has, conditions have, have alleviated, we can also bring a resolution to have the city council lift the emergency declaration or just let it expire.
Thirty days or 60 days?
It's 60 days on the resolution.
I'm sorry. I, it is 60 days. I apologize. I, I misspoke. Yeah, so basically it will, it will show up, it will show up on your agenda at least once every 60 days for review. And then, like I said, either it can be rescinded or it will just expire if there isn't a further extension.
Okay.
So it requires affirmative action to extend it?
It requires a review. And so what I have typically done with cities is basically put something on the consent calendar to have the city council confirm that the emergency conditions are continuing.
Okay, so there is, there isn't affirmative action, but it can be done in a discreet way?
Yes.
Okay. Are there other further questions of business item 3.1? No? Allison, is there one from the public who has asked, would like to ask a question?
No public comment.
Okay. So I'll bring this back to the, back to the council. There's no, accept a vote, I mean, accept a, what am I trying to say? A motion, a motion to accept resolution 14/20.
I would go, I would go to accept resolution 14-20.
That comes from Vice Mayor Haroff. Is there a second? Uh, councilmember Paulson had that. All in favor? I guess we need to do a roll call vote again?
That's correct.
Okay, so we'll do a roll.
I am in favor.
Councilmember Hilmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Paulson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Haroff?
Yes.
Shareway.
Yes. So returning, before we adjourn, I said we would return to public comment for items that are not on the agenda because people may not have had a chance to go. Is there, have there been any other public comments submitted? Allison?
There is no further public comment.
Okay. Terrific. So now I believe we can adjourn the special meeting of the Larkspur City Council from Wednesday, March 18th. And I want to say to everyone who may be listening, thank you very much for your patience in this matter. We will be continuing to engage with our public in a responsible way by following the advice of our Director of Public Health and our national and state emergency officials. We will, this is a work in progress, so I really appreciate our staff being able to learn and, and adapt as quickly as they have. And I'm sure in the weeks ahead, we will be learning new skills. So I'd like to turn this, I assume, back over to Allison to shut it down? Or how do we, do we just?
If you call for an adjournment, Madam Mayor, then I think Allison's then going to press the stop recording button.
Okay.
We hope that we'll be able to post a recording of this meeting in very quick order. It's, again, new technology for us, so it'll be the first time we try to do that.
Okay. So just a reminder to everyone, councilmembers and our public, is to check our website for updates on things, particularly about meetings and closures. And at this point, our next regularly scheduled city council meeting is April 1st, and I believe we're still on, under the order of quarantine or self-shelter in place, so it's likely to be an online meeting at that time. So I will take a motion to adjourn.
I'll, I'll move, I'll make that motion, but first want to again express appreciation for Dan and for Sky for jumping on this resolution so quickly because it wasn't more than just a couple of days ago, but I think we had doubts about whether this was a good idea. And I think we've, we've come quickly to the, the understanding that it is.
Great. Go ahead, Dan.
I'd like to extend my gratitude to all city staff and the community for cooperation in these difficult.
Okay, everybody stay safe and stay six feet apart at the minimum. It's shelter in place until we know better.
Good, good meeting, Madam Mayor.
We're adjourned.
Thank you.